25 St. Clair Shores City Council meeting to order. Amy, please call the roll.
Mayor Walde.
Here.
Councilmember Burgess.
Here.
Councilmember Karen.
Here.
Councilmember Frederick.
Present.
Councilmember Rubello.
Present.
Councilmember Rusi.
Here.
Councilmember Vitale.
Here.
A quorum is present.
Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item two is proclamations and presentations. We don't have any. Item three is audience participation on the agenda items. You have a two-minute time limit to submit to the clerk prior to the start of the meeting regarding any items on the agenda. Amy, do we have any?
Mayor, there is none.
With that, we will go to item four, which is planning case. 4A is request for rezoning to rezone 22501 and 22601 East Nine Mile Road located in the northeast corner of Nine Mile and Glen Court from RM1 Multiple Family Low Rise to B3 General Business District. Liz? Good evening, Mr. Kirk. How are you?
Good. How are you?
Very good.
Bob Kirk, 19500 Hall Road, Clinton Township. Born and raised in the city. Family's been here 65 years, but I got scolded by Mr. Eery for not wearing a tie. Went home today prior to the meeting and didn't put one on. I apologize. We're here tonight asking for a rezoning on the St. Mary's property. I think everyone's familiar with the property on Nine Mile Road. It's been closed for over five years. Kind of a mess over there. The zoning is currently the RM1. We're looking for a B3 use. The current zoning is not real conducive or the uses under the zoning are not conducive. It couldn't be really used for residential because of the configuration of the property and the Nine Mile frontage. Office use has kind of dried up, but even seniors use. Those are large buildings now. So what we're asking for is the B3 use. We have a special land use to follow and site plan. Our use, we believe, is consistent with the master plan with the Nine Mac downtown area. It's Nine Mile. Nine Mile runs from Jefferson to Grand River. Adjacent to it is the Amvett's Hall, which is parking and B3. Then we have the McDonald's with a drive-through. We think the rezoning is consistent with the surrounding properties. We don't think it'll have much effect on the traffic in that it's kind of a local use. It won't be more of a destination type of use in that area. It's a small project. It will not affect the traffic. We understand there's residential abutting it, but in older cities like this, even newer cities, there was never many planning plans made for buffer zones. So we have a lot of commercial abutting, retail, commercial uses. But your zoning ordinance addresses that, and I think we've gone beyond the traditional wall. We have buffering. We have landscaping. So with that, we think we request the rezoning be approved.
Questions regarding the rezoning. Vitale?
Would rezon be the proper time to raise the issue of the turn since that's part of the decision, in my opinion, that we're going to do in the neighborhood?
I would say no.
Okay.
That'll come up later.
I would say no. We have a good answer for it.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Rubello?
As far as rezoning, there's a lot of changes going on down there at Nine Mile and Mac. We've created something down there through the, really through a social district that's now turning into a lot more, and there's some excitement down there. And these types of things have to be done if we're to continue on this path we've taken. My, I guess my, one of my questions is with the complaints on here with the letters, there's, I think there's five of them. Those folks all are the ones who butted up to the property, the wall. Is that what, it looked like that. I took a ride back there. It seems that those were the...
Yep.
So, you know, these types of decisions, when you rezon and you try to create things and, you know, we all get up here and we want to see the city, you know, move forward. I'm all in favor of this whole project, and we just have to really make sure that we do try to keep the residents behind there happy also because everyone's living together back there, right? The businesses, the wall, the people living in the houses. So I am always in favor, I shouldn't say always in favor, but this is a pretty big project. That, that building there, has it been vacant, Mayor, how long has it been? Like five, six, seven years now?
Yes.
And it's a wreck and it's a mess. And there's all kinds of things look like happening. The wall looks like it's disintegrating. It's bending in. And in order to bring what I'm looking for as a city council person, the excitement of the area, and I think really it all works together because over time, I think everyone will benefit from it. So I am in favor of the rezon, and I would like, I think every time this comes up, councillor, rezoning this is perfectly legal. There's...
Yes, it is.
Okay. Because that always seems, you know, to me anyways, rezon. I know that it is, but I'd like to get a confirmation from the, from the mayor. We're doing nothing wrong except advancing that particular part of St. Clair Shores. And I think it's a good idea, and this is what I was after, you know, from the early minutes of the early founding of the social district. And we knew these things were coming sooner or later, and people want to get down there. So I will make a motion to approve the request to rezon 22507, 22601 East Nine Mile Road, parcel number 09-14-27-456-052, and 91427456054. Located at the northeast corner of Nine Mile and Glen Court from RM-1 Multiple Family Low Rise to B3 General Business District, represented, are you St. Clair Management? Represented by St. Clair Management. And this was recommended for this body, for the city council, to approve. They always do the planning commissions, very much part of, you know, what we do in forwarding the city. So I just wanted to add that, that this has come recommended.
It's moved by Mr. Rubello. Seconded?
Support.
By Mr. Frederick. Question by Ms. Rusi.
Thank you. Not a question, just a statement. I think the present zoning is appropriate and proper as a buffer transition zone. We did receive some citizen opposition. I think there's reasonable uses under the current zoning and the effect on the surrounding property. Now, we had the rezonia request from Office of CLD for parcel land just a little bit down the street, 229809 Mile, the nets of the Kroger Gas Station. And it was going to be Office of CLD. We actually had that twice, once for what was to be a retail for the Dollar General, just one retail, and one for Coney Island, one restaurant, you know, drive-through. The body turned it down pretty vigorously, actually, at that point. And this actually would, I think, impact more residents and just the shape of the irregular shape of the parcel. I know we've cited the, and I don't know how appropriate this is for consideration for rezonia requests, but the current state being a wreck and a mess, which I'm not denying that, but are there any open blight cases or anything does the city have?
No.
So if it's such a wreck and a mess, why isn't the city pursuing any blight cases or violations against the current property there?
We do, we do have open code enforcement violations on the property.
Okay.
Right now, but we don't have it as a blight case at Circuit Court.
Okay. So there are, we are having this on the record?
Yes.
And pursuing it?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Mr. Karen?
Thank you. It's kind of hard to ask staff this question. I don't think any of them were around when we were doing the original regency negotiation for the Brownfield Development, which involves St. Mary's. I don't know if we had as a part of that discussion or when we made that agreement that this would go to B3 at some point. Because that was a thing we did enter into, or we had a proposed agreement with Regency. Now, they decided not to sign it.
Yep.
We approved it, and that included basically tearing down St. Mary's. And I think our intention even then was it would convert to B3, that it wasn't going to be a multifamily residential after that because that fit with the downtown plan.
Right.
I just don't recall if that was technically a part of any of those documents then, you know, in terms of going back, we're going back, what, five years?
At least, yep.
When that, because, you know, Councilman Rubino at that time was heavily involved in that negotiation. But I only bring that up because I do think, even though it hasn't been officially voted on before, but I think that's always been the understanding and intention of after the Regency got built and they vacated out of St. Mary's, that this would probably go to a business parcel after that and not be residential anymore, so.
And just, Councilman, that's probably more than five years since. It took a while to build it, right?
Right.
And then they stay there, right? So you could be in that seven year.
Right. And I think we took that into account when we established the downtown boundaries and actually set the boundary at the edge of the property.
Right.
Right?
Yep.
For not only what we called downtown at that time, but then when we created the DDA, we included that parcel as a part of that as well, so. So with that, I think that's been our intent for a while. And when we get to the other ones, we'll hear about some of the mitigations that the petitioner has for the site itself. So I'll be voting in favor.
Mr. Vitale?
Just, Councilman Rusi referenced the other property there immediately west of Kroger Gas Station that was proposed, I think first for a dollar store and then for a restaurant. And I was, no votes on both of those. The reason being, those homes along that street have exceptionally short backyards. I think their backyards may have like a depth of 40 feet or something like that, if that. Those people would have been right up against a very intensive use. And I voted to keep that as office use. And then we eventually did land an office project for that. This is, differs quite a bit from that. These homes have the standard depth that the rest of the street has. There's a proposed green belt here that's another additional 20 feet. So I don't think we have the same issues here that we did at that other property. That's why I'll be voting for it.
Moved by Mr. Rubello, supported by Mr. Frederick to rezon 22501 and 22601 East Nine Mile Road. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Six to one, it passes. Thank you. Item 4B is request for special land use at 22601 East Nine Mile Road. Request for special land use approval for a drive-through restaurant within the B3 General Business District. Mr. Kirk?
Yes, Robert Kirk, 19500 Hall Road, Clinton Township. Again on this one, we're requesting special land use on this property, which will fall in line with the site plan, which we'll be requesting next. You have your standards set forth in your ordinance regarding special land use. We think we meet those. The impact on the surrounding properties will be addressed at the, at site plan with regard to landscaping, buffer zone, the six-foot masonry wall. The one option that comes, or one issue comes up now on this section is hours of operation. Default hours are 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. We're requesting 6:00 to 9:00 Monday through Friday, and 7:00 to 9:00 on Saturdays and Sundays, so an hour earlier. It's compatible with the master plan, as I spoke before. Traffic, we don't think will have much impact in that it's kind of a local use. It'll be kind of anybody passing by, no one will be coming there as a destination. Detrimental effects are to be addressed. That's under our site plan. Again, we have our buffer, our landscaping. So I think we meet those issues. Couple of the other items to point out is that we'll be requesting a pickup window, which won't be on the residential side. It'll be on the west side. We have extensive buffering and screening, and we think overall it complements the master plan with the connection from the Nautical Mile to Nine Mac.
Questions regarding the special land use. Mr. Vitale?
On that buffer zone where it meets the, because you're going to have the drive-through speaker essentially on that side of it, would you be willing to do some plantings along that green belt? And that would help mitigate sound somewhat?
I'm sure we have. Our engineer's here, so.
Okay.
He's more familiar with site plan. At Planning Commission, we talked about that, having enhanced landscaping, and we agreed to that.
Especially probably in the area where that drive-through speaker's going to be, maybe some tall evergreen-type shrubs?
So we currently...
Your name, sir?
Alejandro Fernandez with Stonefield Engineering.
Thank you.
Where we're at 555 South Old Woodward Suite 12L, Birmingham, Michigan. We do currently have some landscaping back there. There's trees that will shield the noise coming out, you know, of the menu board as well as visibility to the building.
Are they evergreen and tall?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Mr. Frederick, do you? Nope. Anyone else? Any other questions? Mr. Rubello?
Again, let me go back to the Planning Commission is recommending this to us. They do their homework. They, you know, do a lot of things, and you guys are already in front of them. Is there any, don't get me wrong, I know that, you know, when you rezon and there's going to be a new business, it's tough on, on some of the residents that are in that area. So it's not like I'm oblivious to that. What are some of the things that you need to be doing? It looks like some of the, is there any stipulations that you need to be making? As far as? As far as anything that you need to be doing to build the place, to work into the neighborhood and so forth?
Not right here, I think, under the special land use here.
It'd be site plan, and that's...
Those are more questions for site plan.
For the next one?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we're asking for the site plan, I'm sorry, special land use. We have a motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the site plan. Wait, that's the, I'm sorry.
A motion to approve the request for special land use approval for the drive-through restaurant within the B3 General Business District.
Yep.
Do we have support?
Support.
Supported by Ms. Burgess. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Six to one passes. Thank you. Okay. Item 4C is request for site plan approval. Request for the site plan approval for a retail center including a drive-through restaurant and an additional tenant spaces for 22601 East Nine Mile Road. Yes, sir. You can go over that, please. Thank you.
All right. Hello again. I'm Alejandro Fernandez with Stonefield Engineering. We're at 555 South Old Woodward, Birmingham, Michigan, and we're representing St. Clair Retail Management, too. So as mentioned before, you know, we're happy to redevelop this site, which is currently, you know, rough, rough shape. It's been vacant for over four years. What we're trying to build here is around 9,000 square feet of retail with a drive-through end cap. You know, we're beautifying the site. We're bringing that 20-foot landscape buffer along the back to shield from all the residents. In addition to that, we're bringing around 35 trees to the site, increasing the amount of green space by around 11,000 square feet, you know, providing adequate lighting throughout the site for proper circulation for both vehicle and pedestrian circulation around the site. And overall, basically beautifying this site, which, again, currently sits in a very, very rough condition. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have heard.
Well, there was a question regarding ingress and egress. So is that all in Nine Mile?
No. So we currently show two points of access to the site, one off of Nine Mile and one off of Glen Court with no right turn available. But...
Mr. Kirk?
I know the city has concerns...
Can you go to the microphone, please?
I know the city has concerns over...
The Planning Commission, the Planning Commission had the same concerns, yes.
Correct. We've discussed it, and we're willing to rid of that access off of Glen Court.
So you move all access, ingress and egress, to Nine Mile?
The one little use where, the city owns that little triangle that might be beneficial for us to utilize to have a second access there to Nine Mile. And that way, we could do away with the Glen Court.
Questions, Mr. Karen?
Thank you. Yeah, that was one of the major issues because for some reason, the city still own that triangle, which I have no idea why we still do. But I thought that was part of the packet to recommend deeding that over to the property owners as this goes through so that you can create that exit directly in Nine Mile. And Liz, at the Planning Commission, there was some question about the distance from Glen Court and still having egress. Is that okay?
That is okay.
If it came straight out?
Yes. I measured this afternoon from the hard, actual corner of Glen Court and Nine Mile, and you've, if they, if they were to go directly out straight from the drive-through, that's over 100 feet away from the intersection itself.
All right, good. And I think obviously the drive-through is going to be the other concern in terms of noise. You talked at Planning Commission regarding kind of newer technology on the volume control. Did you go through that a bit?
Correct, yes. So it's, you know, brand-new technology called automatic volume control. It's a feature that's going to ensure that at no point the noise coming out of the menu board is 15 decibels above noise level. That's like the sound of like leaves rustling, like autumn leaves, and it will never be above 60 decibels at any point. And that's like a normal conversation between two people. That's about what 60 decibels is.
Okay. And in terms of, so you got the trash dumpsters at the very western end there. Doesn't look like it, but I don't think there'll be any issue in terms of vehicles getting in and then going straight out to Nine Mile there. But do you want to make sure that that is screened and so that there's gates there so it's not visible when it's not being used?
Yeah. So along the back, it's going to be, you know, shielded, matching the, the building, and then it's going to have gates along the front that will be kept close for...
All right. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Vitale?
Yeah. I raised some concerns or some issues, questions we'll call with the materials to be used. And I was told that you are going to do masonry. Maybe, Liz, if you want to cover that?
Sure. So as of right now, the developer has agreed to do stone columns like you see up here on the overhead projector, and then an ephesus facade on two of the storefronts. And then, actually, it'd be four of the storefronts, and then the fifth, which is the Panera, would have a manufactured wood planking or panel. So that would be the front elevation. Then if you go to...
So all our, all our vertical surfaces there, everything that doesn't have a window, is going to be some kind of masonry? Except for the, well, actually, all of the column, all the vertical spaces are masonry?
The columns, yes.
Yeah.
I apologize. I think on our renderings are a little bit different from what that said ephesus on it, but that was incorrect, so we always intend to have...
That's what, that's what kind of kicked it off for me.
We always intend to have it.
So then on the east elevation, the request has been a non-textured material ephesus, whether it is ephesus itself or some sort of, you know, the wood panel system or something that is flat so that is easily maintained on the top half. And then the bottom half would be, again, wrapping the stone or brick around to it. And then on the rear, the rear elevation, actually, it is the like, yeah, that one. Nope, down. Yep, there. On the rear, it would be 70% ephesus and 30% stone. So the stone would wrap all the way around on the bottom third of the building. So we do have that buy-in from the developer.
Okay, good. Just to have that on the record. And to explain that a little bit to you, the reason for the stone, in my opinion, at the bottom, the masonry is because shopping centers, they love to throw salt, and that ephesus is torn up in our weather. The other thing is, you know, and this is almost for you guys, too, that rough texture ephesus in an area that gets bombarded with fish flies and spiders and things like that is a real maintenance nightmare. So I would probably want to keep that smooth so you don't have the nooks and crannies in there. It looks tired and old after a few years. So, you know, and the stone, in terms of the brick and things like that, that's what we would require on Harper Avenue, overlay zones on Jefferson, things like that. So just kind of making the mileroads look as good as the main commercial districts is my concern there. But it sounds like you've, you've met all of that. One other thing, question is, you've got a pretty big green area here, and I appreciate that. Would we be, would you potentially be amenable to allowing benches or anything like that we've done in some of our other districts? Because our intent is to make this walkable along Nine Mile to kind of connect it with downtown. I don't know if you've seen some of the other examples of that in the city?
Yeah. Are you saying basically in the public right-of-way?
Well, not in the pub, wouldn't be the public right-of-way. That triangle area that's all green, essentially adjacent to the sidewalk.
The east end.
East end triangle?
Yeah. So that area is actually being utilized for above-ground detention for stormwater.
Right up against the sidewalk?
We could look. It's, I'd have to look and see if there's enough space.
That's not anything that I would say that would have an impact on my vote. It's just something maybe to keep in mind that, like, again, potentially your benefit is to just, we want this to be walkable and connected Nautical Mile to downtown, and that would kind of encourage that kind of activity.
Okay. Yeah. I mean, we can, we can work with staff and look at it.
Okay.
Being that we're getting rid of the Glen Court, there probably has some...
Exactly.
Yeah, it's a, it's a great-looking area, and this could, I mean, this would really be a nice-looking project. I could picture, depending on what kind of tenants you get in there or something, maybe you'll get a disc golf place in there or something, who knows? But, you know. I think it'll, I think it'll look, I think it'll look good, and, you know, that walkable, that's something we really push in the city here.
Mr. Rubello?
Chris, that was a great point with the whole, with the walking because we do have a master plan, and you're sort of right in there, Nine Mile Road. So I think that this is a great score for St. Clair Shores, okay? I know the Panera Bread, the name's been used in here, so I would imagine that, you know, there's a very, very good chance that it will be Panera Bread. And you have the rest of the units with it, so we'll call it Panera Bread's the anchor store of... I got to tell you something. That building, it's, it's horrible, okay? And what you're doing for that area by putting that there, that's a, that's a great score for the city of St. Clair Shores. And I thank the guy that decided he was going to go put something there. It's a great area. It'll tie in great to our social district. It's all part of our sort of master plan down there, increasing business, increasing pedestrian walking, shopping, stopping blight was one of the big reasons for any type of social district also. And you guys stepped up to the plate, and I think it's great, it's great for the city of St. Clair Shores. That, where the drive-in actually is, so you're away from the homes in the bay. You're not, no one's picking anything up in the very back of your place.
Correct. Yeah.
Okay. And you're very cognizant of the noise, it sounds like. And like I said before, these are tough when you, when you put new businesses in that are close to residential, but that building cannot sit there and remain like that either. It's horrendous, okay? So at that, at that, this was done in three separate steps, obviously. This is the third of them.
Yes, this is the site plan approval.
I will make a motion to approve the site plan approval for a retail center including a drive-through restaurant and additional tenant spaces for 22601 East Nine Mile, represented by St. Clair Shores Management. That's you with items of concern, the installation of the no right turn.
No.
Well, that'll be gone because we're not going to exit.
That's coming out, correct?
Correct.
Okay. A parking variance may be needed should the future tenant parking requirements exceed the provided 71 spaces. A 15-foot develop setback variance will be required.
That's probably going to change spaces.
I just want to make sure we're getting all this in. The site, the drive-through and its current location, the city will deed the parcel to the developer, work with city staff on the garage that is... Work with city staff on the garage that is on the property line. Consider nautical lights on Nine Mile Road. Hours of operation, you're going to go Monday through Friday, 6 to 9.
We already approved that, those hours on the special land use.
Okay, so this is just how it's all right in here. Recommend a motion. Saturday and Sunday from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m., scallop slash curve, the drive approach into Glen Court to eliminate the possibility...
Okay, that's gone.
That's ours. Okay, that's all, so out of here. Make landscaping denser along north property line. Trash pickup not before 7:00. So please, okay?
Moved by Mr. Rabello?
Support.
Supported by Mr. Frederick with a question by Mr. Frederick.
Thanks. So first of all, thanks for cleaning this piece of property up. You know, when I was back there today, that current wall was about ready to come down, right? It's in pretty bad shape. So this is going to clean it up. Not to mention, Liz, if I'm not mistaken, that wall is way shorter than what we normally require for a wall, right?
Yeah, I think it fell victim to the same thing that we've seen, like at McDonald's and where Savvy's is, is that over time, the parking lot's been redone.
Right.
And so the wall seems to get shorter.
Okay, that makes sense. Logistically, there are utility poles on both sides of that wall. How is that going to get fixed or consideration? How do you fix that?
So we are not relocating any utility poles. We'll basically, you know, build the wall kind of currently how it is. Where there is a utility pole, the wall would come up right to the pole break for that, you know, small space and then continue on the other side.
No, I get that if it's in the path of the wall, but there are some poles, there were two poles that were on this, on the parking lot side of the wall. And there were some poles that were in the backyard side of the wall. So they're not even in a straight line. I'm just wondering if there's something you have to...
No.
...accomplish there? No, it'll just stay where it is?
Those will remain, yeah.
Okay.
Those will remain where they're at.
And then you guys did talk about the garage. We have to go next to the garage. And then there is one utility pole, or it's actually a feeder pole for a streetlight on Glen Court that's right in the middle of the sidewalk, which is currently there. And I'm not sure, are we putting a sidewalk on the west end of the property along Glen Court? I don't see it in the rendering, but is there a, are we going to continue with a sidewalk there that would match up with the... Because currently, there's a pole that comes right out of the sidewalk. We should take a look at that, figure out, maybe that pole needs to be moved in some way?
So there is an existing sidewalk there that we are keeping.
Okay, but what I'm saying is there's a pole...
Yeah.
...in the middle of the sidewalk with about a foot on one side and maybe six inches on the other. It needs to be...
Yeah, we'll take a look.
Yeah. You guys can just, if you can just fix that. I think that's just, that was a huge error, a mistake, something that happened a long time ago, right?
We'll look into it and see if there's something we could do.
All right, that would be great. And of course, there's a bunch of mature trees on this site currently. And any mature trees you can save, we'd appreciate it. At least I would. There's like 15 trees. Obviously, it looks great with new foliage and new stuff that you're putting in. But if there's any way to save a tree or two, that would be, that would be great.
Yeah, we can keep as many as we can.
Okay. Mr. Vitale?
Yeah, I didn't want to make it sound like I didn't appreciate your guys being there. I could just kind of beat up on you the first time I mentioned it.
We're here for it.
But on the motion made by Councilman Rabello, I think you're, if you do that driveway straight out to Nine Mile, I think you're going to lose potentially three parking spaces. So I don't want it to be in the motion that we're demanding 71 and you guys deliver, you know, 68. I don't want that to cause a problem. You think you're over what you need?
We are, so we're under what the city requires. We feel like we have enough for our users.
Okay.
If we close that exit, we might be able to gain additional parking spaces on this side of the property, which are not shown here.
Yeah, I thought that might be what you do. On the other hand, I don't want to make you pave spaces that probably nobody's going to use. But do we need to adjust the motion for that since he called out 71?
What I wrote down was eliminate drive approach on Glen Court and possible second approach onto Nine Mile. So it would leave them the ability to say, no, we don't need a second approach, or yes, we do.
Okay. Like I said, the concern for me was we stayed at 71 in the record. I just want to make sure they're not going to get hung up if they can only deliver 69.
So in this case, if the total number of parking spaces required for the total number of tenants doesn't exceed 68, then they'd be okay.
Okay.
If they needed those three more spaces, then that would just be a parking space variance that increases by three.
Okay. Well, I, obviously, I want your guys' project to succeed. I really do appreciate that you're tearing down that old blighted building and putting this up. And in terms of what you're putting up on the property, you know, my father lives in Sterling Heights, and one of the reasons I'm trying to get him out of there all the time is because he could move into an area where he can walk to a coffee shop, he could walk to a business. He'll get killed doing that in Sterling Heights. And you're bringing something to this area that is exactly the kind of project we like to see. I would, without hesitation, come to buy a house on Hanson Court or Glen Court or anything like that so he'd be able to walk over and get a coffee kind of thing. So I do appreciate the development and what you're doing here.
Thank you so much.
Moved by Mr. Rabello, supported by Mr. Frederick to approve the site plan as Mr. Rabello read. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Six to one it passes. Thank you. Be really excited about it. Thank you so much.
Thank us, but Liz is the one that pushed this. I had a project a year or two ago. She says find a user for that, find a user for that location.
Great job, Liz.
Great job, Liz. Thanks, Liz.
I think your tie's on the sidewalk.
Item five is public hearing for consideration of vacation of parcel 09-14-11-204-017 on Avon Street, approximately 150 feet west of Jefferson. Do we have anyone here?
Mayor and council, this is the business, excuse me, this is the property owner of the address on Jefferson where the property would be deeded to. So this is just if you want to speak for like two minutes, in favor or opposed. So.
My name is Levante Nagy, and my wife and I are the property owners on Jefferson. And the city...
So you're at 31225?
31225 Jefferson.
Yep.
And the city told us about that the property was owned by the city behind the building and then informed us that it's going to be deeded back to us. And that's why you're, that's why you're here.
Okay, and they need this, right, Liz? Questions? Mr. Frederick?
Thanks, Mayor. So a couple of things.
Actually, point of order, supposed to a public hearing first?
Yeah, someone had to, someone did try, they raised their hand.
Sorry, I apologize.
All right, thank you.
Also, I just want to say that we would be okay either way if it's deeded back to us or it stays. The city owns it as long as we're allowed to have access.
Thank you. Great. Thank you for pointing it out, council. We'll open a public hearing. Someone like to speak regarding this? Good evening.
My name is Tracy Pachu, and I live at 23212 Avon, which is the residential property adjacent to Lev's property. And we have no problem with however you do this, but we do not have a cement wall between the two properties. And if you guys have owned this property all this time, the wall should have been there. And if you deed it back over to him, then we have to wait another two years for someone to put the wall up that is part of the city ordinance? So that's my only question, because really, we're very, our security is like none. I mean, there's nothing there. And there was, someone built a wall up to this point where the property line is for, between the property and what the city owns, but no one's ever finished it. Our dog's gotten out many times, almost got hit on Jefferson. I mean, the back part of the property was never finished either. We just bought this house in the middle of June. We moved from Seattle area. And so we didn't know, we were going to fence it ourselves, and then the city told me that this had to be done.
Okay.
So all I'm asking is that if you want to vacate the property to Lev, that's great. But the city should owes us a wall if you own the property, and Lev already knows the back needs to be done after he's owned that property for two years. We're happy to have that building filled because there's been all kinds of nefarious crap going on in the back. And I call him and tell him that people are doing bad things back there and stuff. So we're happy to have that. But at the same time, we don't have any security on the side of our property.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else before I close the public hearing? Anyone else? So we'll go back. Request and Liz, okay, okay, you can take care of it. Liz will take care of it. Request for adoption of the resolution vacating parcel and 09-14-11-204-017 on Avon Street, 180 feet west of Jefferson.
So this is a little bit unusual. This is an actual parcel. It's not a public alley. And we don't quite know the real long history of it, but at some point in time, this is, the city entered into an agreement with whoever owned this property before Levy did, long time ago, that this area, this parcel, would be used. And if it were ever to be, I want to get the wording correct here. Let's see here. That the parcel would be utilized as an alley or as alley purposes, and if vacated, the property shall revert back to the title holder of the balance of Lot 4, which is Levy's property. So it's weird because it's not a public alley or a public right-of-way, but it is our public property. And the deed said if it were ever to be vacated, then it would be given back to the property owner. So we conferred with the city attorney on this, and we felt that the best method for doing so would be going through the vacation process. So that is why it is before you tonight. So it would become part and parcel, pun intended, of the primary landowner's parcel, and easements would be retained above and below ground if any utilities needed to be there or are there currently.
Back to you, Mr. Frederick. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so a couple of things. There's a dumpster sitting right there. Is that going to have to be enclosed in some way?
It would need to be enclosed as part of their final certificate of occupancy process.
Okay. And then I guess, maybe it's this body, and I don't know, maybe Mr. Erie could talk about it relative to the wall request from the public hearing. If that should have been a wall, should we have done that? Should we have put that wall up?
If we had owned it, or if we owned it, we didn't even realize we owned it. We, it came across as part of this whole process of getting the business that's in there now in operating is when we discovered that we owned it and that it was a parcel and not a public alley.
Got it. So relative to the wall, then, when they purchased the building, that wall, that would have triggered the wall.
That would have, correct.
And how long have they owned the building?
Year or two?
Little over a year.
So I can only assume that when they purchased, that they maybe gave them two years to put the wall up?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so it won't have to wait two years. Hopefully, it's less than a year or a year to get the, finish that wall down with a step down towards the end.
Correct.
In addition to that, when I was looking at it today, the, if you go, and I think this is still your house, at the far end, there's a parking lot that backs up to the back of their house, which looks like it's been completely redone with no wall there either, which maybe we need to look at, look into that. The other thing that I noticed in the packet, as well as, you know, seeing it on site, where there are some underground storm drains.
Correct.
I didn't know if there was a sanitary there or not, but, so we're going to have to have restrictions on this, that no building can be done there.
Correct.
Over, or if they do, that, you know, we can tear it down and they'd have to put it back, right?
Correct, yes. There is an eight-inch sanitary and an eight-inch storm, which is why we want easements maintained.
Okay, all right. So I just want to make sure that that's out there. And then because we're looking at this as an alley, it doesn't go all the way through because somebody has put bollards or some kind of parking, giant parking blocks, you know, four doors down from them.
Right, because that's a different parcel.
And you can't even make, and you can't make really a left turn because that's a one-way alley based on how the parking is structured. So I'm not sure if that's something we need to look at, too, from a fire, from a fire perspective.
They do have a shared agreement. So yes, we can look at that, too.
Okay, so you guys will work all of that out?
Absolutely.
Okay. That's all I had, Mayor, thanks.
Mr. Rabello?
Listen, one of the, I got actually two things. Across the side street from that building sits another building, okay? Right at Avon, Avon and Jefferson. It's got a for sale sign up there. But I don't know, maybe some of the stuff might have been tied into, that used to be the Northland Fire Station at one time. That building, fire trucks came in and out of there. That's what I think I said before. Maybe somebody marks it one day, but maybe that's how it got all disconfigured in there.
Yeah.
It's always bothered me in front of that place, in front of that particular building, that the nautical, well, the Jefferson lights, the decorative lights, the white ones, are all, it's like jammed in between like two telephone poles. Do you know what I'm talking about?
I can look, I can look and see.
Take a look there because it actually blocks the light out with the two poles on each side of it. It's right in the middle of it. I don't know how it got like that in the first place, but maybe that can, maybe that can be moved by us, too. It's right in the middle of everything. It's, it blocks the light out down there. I don't know, it's always sort of, I've always sort of noticed that. I always thought it was some type of, maybe a little bit of a safety issue.
Sure, we can look at that for sure.
Mr. Vitale?
Yeah, I just wanted to make clarity for the residents who came that have the adjoining property, because I'm sitting up here and I'm not 100% clear, but there's a wall that's going to go up there in less than a year as a condition of the COO.
I would say yes, because they, maybe about a year, maybe about a year.
Okay.
It's not going to be a year because...
It will be two years.
We're winter, so if it's, I mean...
Right.
But the clock runs through the year.
The clock, yes, yes, yes.
Somewhere around a year.
Yes.
Okay. Just want to make sure that's coming for the record so they know, because even I wasn't 100% sure.
Unless they asked for a variance and the variance was granted. And that, they have not asked for a variance. And the track record, as you guys know with the ZBA, they don't give out the wall variances very often.
No.
You have to have a really good reason.
They don't. Even in some cases where I think they probably should have, they don't. Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Mr. Rabello?
I'm, I'll make a motion to approve the request of AK parcel 09-14-11-204-017 on Avon Street, approximately 180 feet west of Jefferson Avenue, retaining all public and private easements by the city of St. Clair Shores.
Support. Supported by Mr. Frederick. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
And six is a request to approve the deficit elimination plan for the police and fire pension. Good evening, Renee.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and Council. As you all probably remember, the police and fire pension village has been in the deficit beginning fiscal year '23. We did put a plan through to the state at that time and made some progress on that. At the end of fiscal year '24, the pension fund was still in the deficit, but it had been reduced down to $573,000, which was a reduction of approximately $660,000. That was a result of a little bit extra revenue and the expenses decreased some. So it was a combination of things that resulted in this reduction. But since we still are in the deficit... But since we still are in the deficit, the state is requiring a plan to be submitted to them that would be approved by, by you, and if that's approved, this would be sent into the state, and until the fund is in, not in the deficit anymore, we have to continue to do this. So, originally, we thought it would take till 2027 to get out of the deficit situation, but because we made such good progress, we're anticipating being out of the deficit by the end of fiscal '26, so two more years.
Great project, I mean, great, you know, movement on this, so it's fantastic. So, questions?
Move to approve.
Support. Move by Mr. Karen, supported by Ms. Rusi. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Item seven is a request, compensation ordinance amendment to the compensation commission process. This request was made by Councilman Karen, so I'll kick it over to Mr. Karen.
Thank you. Yeah, actually, just prior to the meeting, Councilman Frederick asked, why are we doing this? So, main reason why, you know, we've had, the way the, for the public, the way the compensation commission works is currently after elections, a group of citizens that have been appointed, they meet, they look at what city council and mayor's compensation is, and they make a recommendation of whether it stays as is or increases. The last, I think, four to five cycles, there've been modest 2% increases, and this isn't about the amount, because I think what they've recommended has been very modest. I've always been uncomfortable voting for it because I feel like I'm voting for my own raise without any other type of, you know, checks and balance on it. So, earlier this year, I think, or after we had the one in January went through, I looked at what Macomb County has, because they actually had a little bit of a snafu on their part, but the county charter has of the compensation gets set prior to a filing deadline to run for office, but it doesn't change until after the people are elected. So, and basically what that prevents is that people, after they're elected, they can't just increase their own compensation. So, that's kind of a safeguard that's put into the county, and so that's kind of the model I was thinking about putting in with the compensation commission of having the recommendation come before anyone's filing for the next city council election, but it's not going to be effect, or implemented until after the election. That way, the voters can actually decide and actually can weigh in on that. I think a very recent example, Oakland County Board of Commissioners, they were just all elected to their recent terms in November. In December, they voted themselves a 21% pay increase in that, without any other type of input and without that checks and balance or input from the voters on it. So, I think that's kind of the situation where, when you're doing it afterward, you can run into. So, I think it'd be more transparent to the public, more transparent to people that want to run for office, that they know what the compensation is, and that's already set. And I do think, especially, you know, we did have this case in this last election, we did have a new council member join the council, and that was a decision that had to be made by that person right after they got elected, and I don't think that was a really comfortable position to put somebody in. So, that's kind of where I come up with two different changes, and unfortunately, it did change today, after talking to Mr. Erie at 5:30 this evening. So, I did hand out a updated copy of the two changes before the meeting, and basically what this does is that as part of Section 2, which is determination of salaries, expenses, rejection by council, to, for the sentence, that is, the decisions of the commission or the compensation commission shall be effective 30 days following their filing with the city clerk unless rejected by council and implemented after the next city council election. So, that would put in place that the raises would not go in, if there was any change in compensation, that would not go into place until there was an actual election for city council. And the other change in order to pull the decision early prior to people filing for office is in Clause 3, to add the sentence, the commission shall file their decision by March 1st of each odd year to the city clerk. So, that way, the commission would then meet in January, February, they would be required to have their decision by March 1st and submit to the city clerk, and then council would have 30 days to decide to reject it or not. And then it would be implemented after the next city council election. So, that's basically what I'm proposing, and ask council to consider making those two ordinance changes.
So, just to confirm, if voted in, because it comes in front of us and either we reject it or not, so if it comes and it, and it's approved or not rejected, the raise, for instance, because that's how it works, then it would go in and, after the November election?
Correct, it'd be implemented after November election, and that was the conversation that Bob and I had, because there's part of state law that refers to a compensation commission needing to have a decision, be effective within 30 days of them making their determination, but it would not actually change the compensation by saying it's not going to be implemented until after the election. So, that's the reason why the kind of, the words, and the wordsmithing had to happen late in the day.
So, does this have to come if, if the compensation commission must provide this to the clerk by March 1st, right?
Correct.
Am I seeing where, or I did see in an email that it needs to come in front of us within 30 days?
We have 30 days to reject it, yes. So, I think, I think the normal course that we've been operating is that it just, it gets put on the next agenda, and then the body just decides what it wants to do.
I mean, for clarification, we've been, the way it is since 1973, it seems to come somewhere at the end of December or January.
Right, because they would be meeting after the election, and we would get it in December or January.
Right, and we've been voting on it for years now, so we have been voting on it, okay? Questions? Ms. Rusi?
If this is passed tonight, would this go into effect for 2025, and which would mean, I guess, the commission would have to be convened and have their decision by March 1st? Is that correct?
That would be the intention, yes.
Okay, would there be enough time, given it's January 6th, for that to occur? I'm not sure who that question should be directed to.
Has anyone talked, I mean, has anyone talked to the commission? Are they, are they snowbirds? Do we know if we can get them?
That was my, I guess, the question, as I was sitting here thinking about this, if this is going to go in effect this year, there's not a lot of time to convene a commission meeting potentially, so I was just wondering if administration had any insight on that. I know we've been on the subcommittee boards of commissions, sometimes even in a situation where we need to fill a position, and we know there's this deadline coming, and we know it's sometime in November, December, we need to make that appointment. I don't know what the current composition of the commission is.
Yes.
I believe most of the members are on other boards and commissions, so they are here year-round.
Okay, and the one point I did bring up to Councilman Karen prior to the meeting was I wanted to maintain the 30-day speed now or forever hold your peace clause. That gives council 30 days we have to vote to deny, or it goes into impact, because the initial recommendation kind of, it's in the current ordinance, the initial recommendation kind of removed that, and I think we want to, we do want to put a deadline on that for finality purposes. I'd be fine with not, because I could bring it up every meeting, because I always vote against these things, but I think for the sake of the good of the council as a whole, I'll supplement my inclination toward thinking that would be funny, so, and say we should probably maintain the 30-days deadline for a motion to deny to be made, without leaving it open-ended for someone to keep bringing up meeting after meeting after meeting after meeting. So, I thank Councilman Karen and Bob for putting that back in, the amendment suggestion.
Ms. Burgess?
Yeah, I just wanted to make some clarifications, kind of something John brought up, that this affected me, which I guess may be the first time in over 15 years that it actually affected anybody. I was voted in, and two months later, had to vote on that. The amendment here seeks to change the timing of the compensation commission submits its recommendation and when the changes take place for the city council. It says there's two major benefits here. It removes a possibility that someone who has just been elected being put in a position of voting on their own compensation within their first two months of office, and it adds the checks and balances of the voters to the level of compensation since the council decision would be a matter of public record to an election. So, while I understand the intent of the proposed changes, I respectfully do not agree with them. The primary reason is that most individuals who choose to run for city council do it out of a desire to serve their community, not financial gain. Likewise, just like any employee or employer out there, council members deserve fair compensation for the work that they do. It is also important to recognize that we have a compensation committee that is tasked to review all necessary data, conducting due diligence, and preparing a well-informed recommendation for council compensation. I went over the numbers from 2005 to 2023 during that 15-year span, 18-years spanned. There was no raises until 2011, when we did a 5% decrease in wages, and then not again until 2017 was a 2%, 2019 a 2%, 2021 2%, and 2022 a 2% raise, which in the matter of 18 years was only, comes up to a 3% raise in 18 years. So, every two years, council members are placed on a position of voting on a compensation adjustment, suggesting that this process should make us feel bad or feel guilty about getting a raise, which I have felt that in past here. Public service is a valuable work, and serving in a municipal role does not diminish the value of our contributions or the need for appropriate compensation. Furthermore, the notion for voting for a raise before an election year could be used as a political ploy is concerning. Public service should not be politicized in any way. Compensation decisions should be based on the merit and responsibility and the role, not the election cycles or campaign optics. Now, we've been having this since 1973. It is already a matter of record. Our voters already know as a matter of record, so we're really not adding any checks or balances to that, in my opinion. And for this reason, I, I don't support it, but I do have a thoughtful compromise that this would, recommend that we align maybe the compensation in all even years. If we go to all even years, then that would ensure that every candidate is already at least one to three years away from any election cycle, and no possibility of someone voting for this after two months of being on council. So, I can't support the amendment as it is, but I believe there is room for thoughtful compromise.
So, Mr. Erie, you put your, I'm sure you're talking about the even years and how it would relate to implementation after the next city council regular election. Is that what you're going to?
To some degree. Our ordinance that we have for the Elected Officers Compensation Commission is a required ordinance that arises out of state law, and while I understand the logic of what Councilperson Burgess indicated, the state law indicates that the Elected Officers Compensation Commission must meet in odd-numbered years and make their recommendation in odd-numbered years.
State law requires it.
That's correct.
Okay. So, it can't work that, can't work. Mr. Vitale?
Are we required to act upon that within the odd-numbered year?
Yes, we are required to act upon it within 30 days after the compensation commission makes its recommendation.
Mr. Rubello?
Look, I, I do this stuff because I like to do it. I like to make a difference in the community. The 2%, probably most of us, if not all of us, give back our raises infinitesimally, and I'm not voting myself a raise for 2% because I'm trying to break the bank. That's actually ridiculous, okay? Do it because I like it. I do it because we can create social districts that create other stuff that we just saw. Do these jobs because you like to see the Nautical Mile or the Blossom Heath Park shine, and the people have smile on their faces at Veterans Memorial Park. That's why people, like me, do it anyways. I'm not going to speak for everyone else. So, when you say 2%, and then I'm looking ahead, because someone brought a nice point up. 1973, we've been doing this, and it's worked. So, I could technically use, I guess, if they gave me, if they recommended a 5% pay decrease, I can vote yes, I can already vote no. All my stuff's on record. I'm a pretty much open book. I've voted for 2% pay increases before, and I've voted, I believe I've voted maybe in that 5% one that we, we didn't get. So, do it because you love it. I'm not counting, I'm not going to be somebody that uses this in a political arena that says Dave Rubello voted for an increase of 2%, and I did it. That makes me the better guy, because I certainly don't believe that. I believe in what makes people good. What makes people like it is, first of all, you have to like people, and you have to, you have to get involved in your community. So, 2% to me is nothing. I'm not going to use it, and I certainly don't want someone else to use it against anybody else that's not even sitting up here yet. So, that, that's all I have to say. It's not, I'm not here trying to break the bank, and I don't think anyone up here is either, so.
Just to let all our residents know, Mayor's salary is $10,900, and the council is 8,000, these are round, quick round numbers, pretty close, $8,589, so as Mr. Rubello said.
A year.
A year? Yep, $8,589. What did I say?
You didn't say anything. It just, it appeared on the residence page, someone said it was, it was a monthly salary. I just wanted to make sure. People knew it was yearly.
Okay, no yearly, $10,900, that's myself, Mayor, and council's $8,589. So, the 2% is, you talked about, it was $170 roughly, round, round numbers, and of course, thank you, Mr., there are, there are councils in the tri-counties that get health care, they get pensions. This is a no benefit, no benefit, nothing, nothing else other than this, this, this pay, and nothing when anyone walks out the door, but thank you for your years of service, so there's nothing else that goes along with this. But as I would say, pride, it's pride and the feeling that you made a difference in your community. That's what we all walk out of here with at the end of the day. We've tried to, I know I want to walk out with my integrity, and I, and I walk out thinking that I tried to make St. Clair Shores better. That's at the end of the day. It's not $10,000 or $900 or, or 2% raise, which I have voted for in the past, and I have voted against them in the past. So, I think recently I voted for the majority, not so much as just so that we can kip off, we can get another $200, as that, you know, I'll be, I'll be long gone, and it has to go. Someone else will sit in these seats as they go on, and I think that's, so, I mean, let me just keep moving around if there's someone. Mr. Karen, and then I'll go to Mr. Vitale.
I'm going to withdraw my request. I'm not going to go through this. I withdraw it. Thank you.
How do we do that? Mr. Erie?
We have to move the table. Well, there's no motion, so.
You can just die without a motion. That's fine.
Eyes for lack of.
I'll just vote against them all in the future again, and we'll have the uncomfortable conversations every time it comes up, because I was bringing this up because I voted against them in the past, and I was trying to think of a way forward to avoid that. Obviously, the body's not interested, and I will correct Ms. Burgess on one thing. You did not cast a vote this year. There was a motion to deny it. It did not get support, so there wasn't a vote, and so you didn't vote. So, just to clarify that.
Mr. Erie, is there?
This, this was a, an agenda item, I believe, that was put on the agenda at the request of Mr. Karen and one other councilperson.
Me.
And you, so if both of the persons acknowledge. So if both of the persons acknowledge and request that it be removed, I think it can be removed.
Okay, so I will, Mr. Karen made the request, so he's asking it to be pulled, so I'll support that. With that, we'll move to item eight, bids, contracts, and purchase orders. Item A, request to award the sewer grouting contract.
Good evening, council. How is everybody?
Very good. Mr. Freckleton?
Hope you all had a good holiday. So yeah, the first item is for the sewer grouting contract. The areas picked for this were just a few spots that we, based on our, you know, televising of the lines, we noticed there was some joint displacement. And in addition to that, just based on above-ground observations, we could see that due to that joint displacement, starting to pull in some of the, some of the soils and create sinkholes. So we want to address these areas via sewer grouting.
Ms. Rusi.
Thank you. This was bid out.
Yes.
Two bids were received.
Yes.
The lowest bid's being recommended with a 10% contingency, correct?
Yep.
Okay, would you approve?
Support. Moved by Ms. Rusi, supported by Mr. Frederick. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you. Item B is request to award the FCI P P contract.
So similar thing to the sewer grouting areas, you know, selected based on our, you know, televising results. The, the CIPP lining is for sewer lines that have, you know, a little bit more substantial distress to them and need that epoxy liner, just to, to add more structural support and make sure that the pipes stay in good shape throughout the future. It's a very cost-effective method versus, you know, replacement. So we received six bids for this one. Lowest bid came in about, you know, $92,000 lower than the second lowest bid, and we are, again, recommending award with a 10% contingency.
Mr. Frederick? Thanks, mayor. So how did we prioritize this? And I guess, while you're, while we're talking to that, if there, if obviously priority goes, if there's not enough to do the last ones on the list, and then also if we have extra, what do we do?
So again, it's based on our televising of the lines in particular, on the south end of the city. So our kind of televising districts, one, two, and three, the, the infrastructure, the sanitary infrastructure on the south side of the city is the older infrastructure. So that's kind of where the priority came in, is just based on age and condition of that. And then, you know, anything that was, if there was left over, then, you know, we can start to move north into other districts. And, you know, as we address these, then, you know, the next, the next contract will be, you know, we'll just keep moving up and.
And north?
Yep, exactly.
All right. I would move to approve to award the FCI P P contract to Paymark Enterprises in the amount of $1,027,424.75.
Support.
Moved by Mr. Frederick, supported by Ms. Rusi, to award it to Paymark in the amount of $1,027,424.75. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Item eight, C, God bless you, request to award the sanitary sewer root treatment contract. Mr. Freckleton.
So for the root treatment, we already have a contract with Duke's Root Treatment, and so we're essentially just, we're requesting to continue to use Duke's for these services. Same thing, televise, televise the lines and the areas with, you know, kind of the worst roots or worst potential for, you know, further root infiltration is what we're prioritizing on this.
Okay. Ms. Rusi.
Thank you. So this was not bid out. This is using the, was it the HGAC, the Houston-Galveston Area Council Consortium bid pricing?
Yes.
Yeah, back in 2023, and it wasn't you presenting at the time, it was, obviously, it was Mr. Babcock. And it seems like it was more like, they wanted to use Duke, so they did a search to find consortium pricing, found it in Houston-Galveston, and decide, oh, we'll just use that, and that will meet the ordinance. But we really want to use Duke, so instead of doing it the opposite, putting the bid out and then picking the lowest, it just seems like it was so result-oriented. So back in 2023, and I think Mr. Babcock even said, like, oh, we've used Duke, they've always done it since 2001 or something. And it was like, oh, that's not cool. I don't like that. So I voted against it in 2023, and I'll be voting against it tonight, just because I'm not a fan of that type of end result-oriented process. I, there are other companies out here that do this. Did we look at that? Doesn't sound that way. I know back in 2023, it was $100,000. And I don't know if we, I don't think we awarded a multi-year contract, so how were they under contract? So I would imagine we ran through that money already.
That I'm not entirely sure of. I mean, I can look further into that. I can talk to Brian more about that.
Yeah, because I assume 2023, we used the $100,000, because I don't think we've done any carryovers. So, and I don't think we awarded a multi-year. I'd have to look at the minutes, but it's just, it's odd, and it's not as clean as the other ones we put out to bid. We got the bids. It's, I appreciate, we're using consortium pricing sometimes, but this is just very end result-oriented in terms of how this was selected from Houston-Galveston to get us Duke's, so.
Understood.
Thank you.
Mr. Karen?
Yeah, I'd agree. I know we use consortium bidding, you know, when we're joining with other municipalities within the area.
Yeah.
Like we do on salt contract or police vehicles, it's through a state bid. So there's areas that are locally controlled that we use consortium bidding, just not shop it around and get a pricing and that. So, because the thing is, we have no idea in terms of what they are using as a quote or as a spec when they're doing it in Houston versus what we're using up here. And so that's kind of why it's like, yeah, we've got consortium bidding that does get used, but there's a local element to it. And so I think this kind of really goes beyond that and should have been bitted out.
Mr. Vitale.
Is there a local consortium for this root bid process?
I, I'm not sure. I, I'm not sure. I mean, yeah, I had nothing to do with the, you know, the HGAC one.
I'm only gonna, I think if they had one, it would.
Yeah. I would imagine if there was a local one, we would have prioritized that one. And I would have to assume.
That's the difference between saying it's local and saying it's not local, is that we don't have one in Oakland-McComb or, you know, even Laneway or something like that. But if one does exist, certainly the argument is legitimate.
No, I, I agree with that. But I've, again, I would, I would imagine that if there was a local one, that would have been prioritized.
I'm also a little bit afraid to just, if we don't have another consortium pricing to base this off of, to throw it out for bid when we're actually coming in below the prior year, that we get burned on that.
Correct.
We have in the past, not as general practice, but it can happen. I mean, they already know a baseline, basically, of what we're willing to pay. It's out there in the public record. So, okay, I just wanted to know if we had a local consortium, and if we feel like maybe tabling would give us a chance to actually answer that question, I might support that and willing to do that. But absent that, I don't want to just put it out there, and we've already kind of advertised what our baseline is.
Mr. Frederick?
I just had a quick question on, it's basically, it says sewer chemical root control, but yet in the contract, it talks about hydroexcavating and related services. So I guess two questions. Will the company be hydroexcavating?
The hydroexcavating.
Laser water, kind of water pressure?
Hydroexcavating is just essentially like high-pressure boiling water that they use. And I, I believe they would only use that if there'd be evidence of further root damage on the outside of the pipe, where they would have to actually access, like, the top of the pipe to further clean it. Otherwise, the, otherwise the chemical treatments and the, you know, kind of root mandrel drill should take care of that and then, you know, kill everything and keep it from growing back.
And do we know if the chemical is lake-friendly?
It is. The chemical, the chemical that they use has a very quick half-life, so by the time it's even, you know, out of the sewer, it's already, you know, non-contaminating.
All right. And the price is $2.43? $2.43? Do we know what, what the, $2.43 per, per linear foot? Is that what it is, or?
Let me see. Yes, it's, yes, per foot.
Per foot. That's pretty good. That's pretty good.
Mr. Rubello?
Mike, hi. Some of the questions I was going to ask already been asked, but I'd, I'd like to know how much you know about how these fertilizers have been tested? They tested on dogs?
What do you mean by fertilizers? You mean like the root?
Chemicals, I should say. Chemicals fertilize, okay.
I mean, I, I don't know how they're tested, no. But like I said, they, it's not, you know, it's, it's a, it's a strong chemical, but it, you know, it dies off very quickly in the sewers, and that's why it's safe to use in our sewers, especially in a lakeside community. So I mean, I understand where you're coming from, but I don't know exactly.
Because the stores buy it from people, but I don't know who those, how those people.
I mean, I can absolutely look into that for you.
The cats or cats or whatever it happened to be.
I certainly hope not.
Well, you'll be surprised.
Sure, for sure.
Okay.
So we'll need a motion, whether to approve or.
I would, I would move to approve the city to utilize the current contract with Duke's Root Control to complete the fiscal year '25 sanitary sewer root control work, and next year pursue some bidding options if there, if that's councils.
I would make a motion to support based on what I see here, that this is also, same company's being used by City of Sterling Heights, so they do have some local work. So I'll make a motion to support.
Moved to by Mr. Frederick, supported by Mr. Vitale, Mr. Karen, sorry.
I'm sorry. I guess I would just say, I guess, I'm just wondering why we even have a purchasing policy in the ordinance? If we just seem to regularly violate it. And administration, it becomes legal once council approves it. But to use a consortium from Houston for chemicals up here, to Councilwoman Rusi's point, just so we can pick that vendor and to say, well, we got the pricing, it's not the intent of the purchasing policy. The purchasing policy is meant to, that we have competitive bids, and yes, sometimes they come in higher, most times they come in lower. That's the whole point of it, not to just pick a vendor and then say, hey, give us a price that you got from some government somewhere, and we're good. That's kind of what's going on here now, so that's all.
Moved by Mr. Frederick, seconded by Mr. Vitale to utilize the current contract with Duke's Root Control to complete the fiscal year '25 sanitary sewer root control. All in favor?
Aye.
Amy, roll call vote, please. Let's start with Mr. Frederick and supported by Mr. Vitale.
Councilmember Frederick?
Aye.
Councilmember Vitale?
Aye.
Councilmember Burgess?
Aye.
Councilmember Karen?
No.
Councilmember Rubello?
No.
Councilmember Rusi?
No.
Mayor Walby?
No. Please bid it out. Thank you. Consent agenda, item nine.
I'd like to remove 9A.
9A?
And make a motion to approve the rest.
Support, supportive, move to approve consent agenda B through G, moved by Mr. Karen, supported by Ms. Burgess with Mr. Karen's request to remove 9A. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Mr. Karen and 9A.
Thank you. Mr. Lent, under, you were emailing earlier today regarding the storm sewer expenses. The Fishbeck expense for the Alger Storm Pump Station engineering fee, $7,635, being categorized as capital outlay. Didn't know if capital outlay is correct, because that's not what we had budgeted, whether it should be under pump station repair or one of the other lineages instead, where it's not, you know, delineated exactly what the three projects were. And also with the engineering fees, it's not really outlay when we're doing studies, because that's not, doesn't end up being a depreciable asset.
Correct. So how the project would be categorized is, it shouldn't be a capital outlay currently. Now, if council chooses to, once, so what Councilman Karen in the email that kind of council asked for earlier was, we are doing a study at the Alger Pump Station. We want to make sure that we are looking to try to put a generator out there. We do have a power source with a backup power source, but when both power sources do go down in a larger storm, the Alger Pump Station does lose power, as it did back in the spring when we had our large amount of rain. At that time, we did consult with one of our engineering firms, Fishbeck, to go out and do a study to find out if we could put a generator out there. One of the things that prompted this is our police station, as we're well aware, are going, is going to be getting demoed. We do have a generator that's utilized in our police department. We are looking to see if that generator potentially could be repurposed and potentially be used at the Alger Pump Station. So Fishbeck has gone down there, they're analyzing the entire, we have three motors that are there, three different horsepowers of motors. They're looking to see if this would work. As part of the engineering for this, that is the fee that was in there, so it is not a capital outlay project. But we're hoping to get quotes and prices back, so for the budgeting year, we'll be able to bring back in front of council to find out if this is a project that council would like to see moving forward. And we do have some prices from one of our engineering companies on what it would take to get this goal accomplished. If the project does end up being voted on by council and we do move forward, then the engineering fees, whether it's a study or not, would be part of the project, depending on how much of the project went towards the project. And at that point, it could turn into a capital, but for on its purposes, it is not a capital project currently. So you're correct, it's just labeled incorrectly.
Okay, thank you. All right, then, we'll do a pro.
Mr. Karen? Hold on, I'll give to you, moved by Mr. Karen, supported by Mr. Frederick with a question by Mr. Vitale. Did you, you had a question?
More or less, what I wanted to say was, is that this question of Alger Pump Station came up because there was a posting made on social media anonymously saying that power had failed again at Alger Lane. And I did email city manager, asked that if we'd lost power in any pump stations, or if we had any complaints of basement flooding, because we did have a record rain, that was a record amount of rain, actually, that we had. And the answer was no.
Correct.
And we didn't have any failures or anything like that. At that point, he did mention that there was potential to reuse the police department generator to provide, I guess, redundant redundancy for Alger power stations, because we can't count on DTE. And we had, at one point, hoped we could use that generator at the fire station. That didn't work out. So actually, I do appreciate that staff is looking to make use of a very expensive piece of equipment to provide backup to the backup. So I just wanted to compliment staff on that.
Thank you. Moved by Mr. Karen, supported by Mr. Frederick to approve the bills. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Item 10 is updates, follow-up, some prior council meetings. Before I go to Mr. Lent, we'll go to Mr. Erie, because he has an introduction, and I could have got him out of here at 7:05, but we wanted him to see and enjoy this council meeting that we had here on Monday, January 6th. So Bob, introduction to a new part of your team.
Great, thank you, mayor. If I could ask Matt to come on up, I don't mean to put you on the spot, Matt, but as you are aware, we lost a lawyer at our office due to his having been elected last November to become the 41 district court judge in Shelby. And that made an opening for us, and we looked long and hard to find somebody to fill the shoes of Eric Shepard. It's always a, it's, it's a big issue for our firm to hire an attorney. It's an important moment in our firm's life, and we looked long and hard and found Mr. Matthew Haw. And I just wanted to take just a, just a minute, just a couple minutes, to just introduce him to city council, and of course, to all staff sitting in the back. Matt comes to us from, actually, he's been employed with the city of Detroit with an expertise in pensions. He comes from a family background that has a long history of public service in McComb County. His last name is H.A.U.G.H., so that may give you some information. He actually has planning commission experience, having been on a planning commission. He has a number of years' experience in prosecuting at the municipal level. He has already been involved in prosecuting in 40th District Court, and has, even though he has only been with us a short time, had successes over in the court. And so he will be working, working with. And so he will be, uh, working, uh, working with us. We're proud to have him on board and I just wanted to take a moment to introduce you, uh, Matt, to city council. I'm not asking you to say anything. If anybody has any questions, of course they may, but, uh, uh, now that everybody knows and recognizes Matt, uh, we look forward to him being of, uh, service to the city of St. Clair Shores.
Yeah. Welcome, welcome, Matt.
Mr. Karen? I look forward to working with all of you.
All right, Mr. Karen, he's got the, wait a minute.
Yeah, actually, um, yeah, welcome to the team and bumped into you over the court last, uh, last month and kinda freaked out a little bit, cause kinda made him feel like he was kinda lost over there, cause he's just standing in the hallway, it's like, hey, sir, do you work here? He's like, nah, he had to remember, oh, yeah, I do, I do actually work here. Um, no, so welcome to the team, but one of the things I wanted to bring up, I was actually talking to Liz Coto about this earlier. Um, in terms of the planning commission and zoning board, anyone that's been to these meetings, the commission members all sit up here at the table and staff tends to sit off over in the side boxes, including the attorney. Um, and a lot of times where there can be a bit of question of what should be the processes are always kinda careening over to check, you know, what the attorney may have to say or what be able to guide them. I don't know, maybe, you know, Matt, as you're coming in, uh, may wanna consider sitting in the middle table to help the chair, um, to help maybe guide those meetings a bit better and have that more of the direct communication with the chair during it versus, and the careen over and try to get the, uh, attorney involved and, or in, or in some cases, I, I've seen the attorney over in the, over in the side almost trying to do this, like trying to get people's attention, um, to interject, so. Might be just a little seating change that might help those boards do their work appropriately, I think would be good to see, but, um, especially since you've come in with some experience of being on those types of boards, I think that'd be very valuable for them, so, welcome to the team.
Sounds great. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Matt.
Mr. Lent, on the updates and follow-ups?
Yep, uh, item number one, uh, Mr. Karen mentioned in the bills, a board member was paid to take minutes, uh, for the communications commission. He also asked for a consistent policy across all boards. Um, the clerks department, along with administration and the city attorney will work on updating the boards and commission handbook, including the policy on, um, the minute takers and who is getting paid. Uh, but we did go back and we did look, that communications person has been paid since two thousand and thirteen, um, and we have stopped going back, but at that point, for the least the last eleven years, twelve years, that person has been paid.
So I guess, so what's the timeline on updates? Because these are very similar to same updates Councilwoman Rusi asked for two years ago.
Um, so I, me and I did talk to Abby and we will get with, uh, Bob. Abby has done a lot of work already on this plan. Um, we just gotta make sure it gets reviewed and once we get it reviewed, we'll get back with council.
Timing?
Um, hope to have something back to you by the end of February at the latest.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Karen wants an explanation of discrepancies between the audit and the August financial statement for the police, fire and court. Uh, the differences are made up of incurred payroll, incurred friends benefits and the accounts payable items for invoices that were received after the cutoff date. Uh, there are not discrepancies, but a normal part of doing businesses. Uh, many items are taken care of at the end of the fiscal year. The timing may be a little different each year, uh, but the same type of things are being handled each year, spreadsheet is being attached. Uh, one of the things, uh, as we talked about, um, our friends benefits, we did have quite a bit of change, we are a self-insured, um, entity, uh, as well as with payroll, you do have a little bit of a difference of when that last payroll is run. You could be one day, two days, six days, um, into the next fiscal year, but has to be all backdated. Um, so that's, and the statements are all attached in the packet, so all the information is in there and it's included.
So what the statements do not have is when the charges were received.
Okay.
Right? The main concern is, you know, the financial statements come out, or this last year came out six weeks after the end of the fiscal year. And again, there's a typical delay because there's a lot of year-end work that happens in accounting. So rather than, normally it'd be three to four weeks, that was six weeks. I understand that. But then when those come out and then the final audit numbers show is one point five million off, particularly with three departments, where it put two of the departments over budget. Yeah, that's where I'm really starting to get concerned of, did we really, you know, if it was just these benefit payments that put everything over, were there other things that were running higher through the year and that that tipped it? That we weren't, cause we weren't, you know, tracking the other expenses, but we're right on the fringes? Or were the fringes way higher than what we ever anticipated? And that's what put it over, right? That's, it's, I still have those questions in my mind about that. And especially since it's like we were asked to make budget changes in May, so that departments wouldn't be over budget. So they wouldn't be part of the audit, you know, and we, and we still ended up in that situation. So.
So to piggyback off a lot of that, just for clarity, so for understanding, um, when the city has adjusted and our benefits are all now through an HSA plan, which is a high deductible plan, where the city, uh, fronts some of the beginning bills for the individuals, we're on a two thousand, four thousand deductible. Um, where we fund for single families, a little over a thousand dollars for that, for, uh, two-person and families, we, we fund approximately a little over two thousand of that. So at the very beginning of that, we are already funding that, that's being paid, then the rest of the next balance is on the employees at that point, after that date. So the front amount is hit at the very beginning, but when we're self-insured, a lot of those claims that are coming in that would be paid by the insurance are typically more towards the end of
Right.
the year, especially if people, for example, if they've already hit their deductible, they're trying to get all procedures and activities and everything in at the end of the year. And they end up getting a lot of the stuff in, which then ends up turning into us getting late stuff. And I see the finance director up here as well, she could probably piggyback off a lot of those financial or the healthcare reasons as well.
Yeah, because of the timing of everything, um, claims for, um, Blue Cross, any kind of benefits can be, um, come in through the end of August and they will go back to the end of June. So we have to wait until all those claims come in, so we know what the final numbers are, because claims for June can come in at any time. But our cutoff is August thirtieth, so at the end of August, the claims, we can get some totals. And once we get the totals, then we have to do all the work, so it takes some time. That's why we have our audit a little bit later, so that we can get all these numbers in, cause we're working all throughout the summer to get the final numbers in. There's, um, invoices that come in all through August, it could be for through June. And, um, there's all kinds of different calculations that are being done all through the summer, up through the audit.
So.
And even after the audit starts, if there's different things that are found that it's like we need to make another journal entry and that kind of thing.
Okay. So I think, so in terms of what I, all I can see in the audit is the high level department number? And where they were at towards budget? So can you provide the audit numbers of, you know, just to say the fringes of, to say if that's really what was, ended up being way over? That drove those three departments to be that much different than what the July or the June financial statements had in mid-August?
I can get you copies of all the invoices, if that's what you want, all the different journal entries and.
Well, I guess, so I guess, is it possible to rerun the end of June report? But with the up, with, after everything was entered?
That's what, yeah, that's what the audit is, that's what the final numbers are. Yeah, exactly.
Okay. Can you run that same financial report, but just through that with the audited numbers?
Mm-hmm.
And see what that says?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I do wanna apologize to the council too, I, I'm looking at how it's printed out on our sheet when we review it. It's, comes out a little bit different, so it is very, very hard to read on here, I mean, I can just show you what he's trying to decipher.
Okay.
It actually does line up, it's actually more in a landscaping and Excel format, so it actually does line up and give you a lot better clarity, where I think this right here is just hard to read and probably made no sense.
Cause the bottom ones that are on here, the bottom numbers on here, it adds up about one point two million.
Yeah.
And then we're one point three million, so that's close to the one point five that I saw the difference in, but it, I just wanna, you know, because of all the healthcare changes, and as you go from one budget year to the next, if the last year ended up coming in way higher than what we anticipated, well then, how do we, either one of, how do we get ahead of that? Or whether we have to adjust the budget already for this year, fiscal year, you know, to account for that? You know, since, I think this last year is the first year we've had this particular plan in place, right?
Yes, we've changed the last three years.
Right. So, so I think some new numbers can be coming in like that, so.
Yeah, we're always doing our best guess and it's, it's our best guess and things always come out a little bit differently.
Yeah, it, so if you can give me the, the updated end of June ones with the audit numbers, I'll take a look at that and I'll just let you know if I have any questions. Thank you.
Um, we also had a resident comment, uh, from a St. Clair Shores resident, spoke on the colored ink used on the water bill. Um, the printing project was sent out to bid and the lowest bidder was chosen and approved. The bid did not request additional color. A copy of the former bill was sent in the bid packet, which did utilize, the former bill did utilize black, blue and red. Uh, we had not re, changed over the updated city logo yet with the former vendor because we had purchased the stock in advance. They simply just gave us a more attractive bill and actually added lesser value. Uh, so there is a copy of the purchase order that is attached in your packet. Uh, we also then had a couple of residents spoke on the stray cat problem that we had at two one, two two nine Briar Street. Um, and just kind of a little bit of an update on that as well. Um, over the holidays, we have been working with Macomb Animal Control, um, we've been working with Chief Randazzo. Uh, the goal is to get that colony cleaned completely up. Um, part of the process that we'll be starting is a collection of the colony of cats that are out there. Um, the first step will be to secure permanent responsible homes for many of the cats. This will require collaboration, uh, with local rescue groups, foster families and adoption networks. Then we'll go to the sterilization and medical care. Um, the animal control, Macomb Animal Control are able to sterilize the male cats. Unfortunately, it is a little bit more intrusive to do the female cats, so they have to work with some local veterinarian groups. In the process, when they do do the trapping, the male cats will be sterilized immediately at Macomb County. The female cats will be actually looking for organizations all about animals to perform the sterilization process on the cats, which will include vaccines, ear tipping as part of the trap neuter program. This will also ensure the health and wellbeing of the colony while also preventing further population. Uh, the trapping and temporary fostering, the third stage will involve trapping the cats and transporting them to a safe temporary fostering environment. These fostering homes will provide necessary care and supervision for the cats as they await surgery. We are working with the resident nephew, along with neighbors, for onsite trapping and also for many private organization and groups. Uh, we will transport to the clinic, once the cats have been safely housed in a temporary foster care, they will be transferred to the clinic for sterilization, surgeries and any necessary medical treatment. Then they'll do a return and relocation. Um, the post-operative cats will either be returned to their new homes, uh, or the colony, if some are needed to prevent a vacuum effect. Uh, for those with no viable permanent home, efforts will be made to find suitable locations elsewhere that will ensure their safety and wellbeing. So we are taking the safety of the cats, uh, in hand. Um, there are some that will be returned, but it will be a limited amount. The rest will be rehomed and Macomb County has, I can tell you, Chief Randazzo has done, uh, quite a bit of work on this and this is a paramount issue that we have stressed as a city. Um, and we are making sure that all the cats are being sterilized and taken care of properly.
Mr. Vitale?
Yeah, I, I wanted to comment on that, cause I asked, uh, Mr. Lent for an update on that for tonight's meeting, cause I know we had residents that spoke on it. Um, there was a, and one thing I wanna say is that the, the cats returning, because, you know, I thought, well, okay, they're sterilized, but they're still going to defecate and have some of the same issues. However, uh, Chief Randazzo is far more of an animal expert than I am, has said that a certain number do need to be returned, otherwise other colonies will take the place. I suppose that somewhat makes sense to me. Um, if, you know, if there's not a dominant male there or something like that, that's going to keep the other ones away, I suppose it could start a whole new colony. But the, I think more important thing that was raised out of this, and I did send it out as an email, is that, you know, I supported the TNR program when it was brought before us, maybe ten years ago. And I think we've kinda sailed along for those ten years, thinking that things were being handled, cause we'd never really had it come up on our radar. Apparently, it was on staff's radar at some point. And I think maybe if we need to tweak that ordinance, or we need to give some kind of oversight power to the animal welfare committee, and if we need to have that as an agenda item to discuss it. I think if there are residents we become aware of who are not really doing it right, they're not putting the cat condos out there, they're not, um, they're just throwing their open feeding on the ground or they're utilizing the garage or something like that, then we have to exclude them from that TNR program. I mean, I, I had a, um, a tenant who was very into the, she was on the animal welfare committee, she did make the cat condos and she did all these things and never had a complaint, never had a problem. Um, but then we have the other extreme too. And I think there needs to be some kind of mechanism to say that, hey, if you're not going to truly administer a TNR program, then you need to be excluded from participating. So again, I don't know if that's something animal welfare committee can handle without our input, or if that's something we need to discuss as a potential agenda item. I'm, I'm putting it out there if anyone wants to back that, um, to put it on the agenda.
Let staff do a little bit more research and come back to us, I think you're making some good points.
Cause we do not, we do not want.
Yeah.
Yeah, we do not want this to happen again and we need to be kept, we council needs to be kept in a loop. If there's other situations in the city where we've got kind of this animal issue, then, then we need to be aware.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Rabello?
I just wanted to comment on, on this issue here. Uh, Chris Vitale, I can't agree with you more. It needs to be tempered, it looks like we're going in the right direction. And I think the folks that, uh, got this particular point, uh, this, this home to where it's at should be excluded from any type of, uh, uh, situation where they have, they have saved, because to me, they already, they already lost it. The animal welfare committee, can they make decisions, or is it our decision, based on the, the number of cats that people can have, based on maybe the area size of their house? I know there's state laws involved, but.
Council's decision.
Correct. Council's decision? Okay, so yes, Chris, when the time comes, I'll second what you said.
And let staff do some of this legwork.
One more point is that I think we also need to, even though, uh, Chief Randazzo said that some dominant cats have to go back to the colony, we need to phase down this address and phase it out. So.
Mr. Karen?
I understand the point, I just caution of, when you get to that level of enforcement, you need to, at that point, you need to be going through the courts. And I, I, I think in terms, same thing we do with, you know, the vicious dog ordinance is that it's actually a judge that makes that determination based on our ordinance, not staff putting that type of limitation when it comes to animals, so. I, that one caution.
Yeah, that would just remove protection of that ordinance.
Good point. Yep. But that will go to number eleven, comments by individual council members, Mr. Karen?
Thank you. Uh, so, uh, just prior to the holidays, um, Councilman Frederick and I attended the Drug Court, Substance Abuse Court graduation, uh, ceremony and that, you know, for the public, you know, we've had the, uh, the court up here explaining what this program is. It was basically for addicts that end up on the wrong side of the law, uh, that our court administrates a program, um, to get them sober, keep them sober and, uh, set them on the right path. Uh, so we had a couple of people graduated from the program.
Yep.
Um, and both of them had polar opposite personalities in terms of what we heard. Uh, but one of the things that really came out is that the one, uh, gentleman, his daughters were there, uh, to support him as part of his graduation. They basically described of their mid to late twenties and that the daughters, they never knew their father's sober. And that, and, and they never knew what his real personality was like. And that because of that, and that they actually love his personality now, um, in terms of, uh, what our court's been able to do. So it, it's a great program and I think another big thing in there, since it does go through a court, actually all the people are part of a program, they do have a defense attorney that's assigned to them. And that's transitioning to a new person. The person that's coming in to take that role came out of that program, graduated from the same program. And so now he's giving back to be their defense attorney. So I just, that, that is just one of the, the, the good feeling stories of what can kinda come out of, uh, some of these situations, so. situations. So hats off to all, and there's multiple court personnel that are involved, as well as Judge Fred Conjolly, to pull all that together and to have such a successful program. So big congrats to them. Another congratulations, you know, Liz Cotto and the CDI Department, you know, we put in for a grant through the DNR that's actually from the DTE Foundation and Relief. And so we were awarded $4,000 for more trees to go towards the arboretum. And I was helping Liz, that not only helped provide the whole tree, updated tree list and kind of what ones we wanted to do in terms of adding resiliency to the number of species that we have. And that's what we included as part of the grant. So that's $4,000 coming from the state that will go to the Briars Park Arboretum here in the spring. So thank you for staff for pulling all that together.
Councilman, is another, like, community involvement to plant?
Yeah, so we'll be doing another Arbor Day planting. Yep. Yeah, we'll start pulling all that together in March and also got to confirm with Brian what type of trees we're going to need. We did have, I do have five trees on my list right now that are, I'm pretty sure they're dead, that need to get replaced, and some of them are unique in terms of the species. So we may need some specific ones to get in there. So, but I'll be getting all that with Liz and Brian, and we'll get that organized for Arbor Day here in April. Last thing, priority. So I got another situation of where they didn't pick up at a house that they should have. And then it got in some interesting back and forth with their vice president of sending the photo of, hey, this should have been picked up. He said, yep, we will get it picked up. Then he emails me the next, and the next day, it was picked up. I get a text from the homeowners, it wasn't picked up. I drove over there, confirmed, took another picture, nope, not picked up. He's like, oh, yeah, I was told something wrong, it'll get picked up. So when he was here in July, because one of the big differences between how they're managing it and how GFL managed it, GFL had a route supervisor, somebody that was driving the route behind the trucks, and that that person would see these type of things and would make sure they got resolved. Priority said, well, we're going to have cameras on everything, and we're going to have people in an office, they're going to be watching it, and they're going to catch it. And they don't have cameras on them, and these things are not getting caught. So could we get an official response from them of, one of, when is every truck going to have their camera system set up and it being actively monitored throughout the entire route? Or when are they going to put a route supervisor to be following the trucks around? Because it's, they promised two to three months, we're now a month seven. So if we can get that by the next council meeting, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Frederick?
Thanks, Mayor. So Drug Court, it does put a little lump in your throat when you're watching these folks and what they went through and where they started and where they ended. And I got to tell you that that particular program has been a, I guess, a model program for other cities and other, and other courts. And so we've got something very special going on here that people are emulating, came out of, came right out of, you know, the heads of the judges and staff, and so we're pretty proud of all the stuff they're doing. Not to mention, there was a lunch. Who knew? Right? So, anyway. Okay. I'll start with priority as well. I'm getting tired of taking those calls, to be honest with you. I got a call on, you know, and we get so many of these. I'm looking for some sort of mass resolution. But we got, for instance, they picked up a street, missed the entire one side of the street for recycling. How is that possible? I'm wondering, and maybe Mr. Eri or Mr. Lent, maybe you can consider how, how do we put their payments in escrow or something until we get them to do what they said they're going to do? The biggest issue, and it's even worse now as the snow's flying, are the garbage cans and recycling cans are still in the street. And, you know, we all drive around the city, and, well, most of us, sorry, kids, most of us drive around the city, and you see the cans out past the curb, not even pushed up to the curb, to the point where two cars can't even get past each other. And it's horrible. And, you know, if it's in, if the language is in the contract, and it says they're supposed to put it on the lawn, then they need to put it on the lawn. And the other thing is, stuff that doesn't make it into the truck should be picked up and put in the truck, right? Like, if they dump something and a paper blows out, it's like, oh, blew out. I mean, I pick up stuff on my street every week. I shouldn't have to do that. So, you know, we may have to get a little more strong arm on this stuff to make sure that these folks are doing what the contract says they're supposed to do. And I'm hoping that we can do that soon. So I don't know, Mr. Eri, Mr. Lent, if you guys can let me know. And I know, Chris, you might be saying some stuff about the other thing that we talked about. So I'll let that go, but I'll let you ask that question. So, all right, so let's talk a little bit about the library. Registration for Little Yogi Yoga, a 30-minute playful yoga class that includes movement, mindfulness, and a story to create a calm mind with instructor Jen Perkins begins today. This program will be on Wednesdays at 6:30 p.m. and run from January 15th through February 5th, suitable for all abilities and sensory friendly. Registration's available online through the library's website. Registration can also be done in person by phone at 586-771-9000, or I'm sorry, 9020, or by email at scs youth at libcoop.net. Take and Make Bags for Kids Ages 2 and Up are available starting today. They'll be available in a bin outside the Youth Services Room and are available during library hours while supplies last. Registration for This Is New, Messy Makers, on Tuesday, January 21st, at 2:00 p.m., begins January 8th. This 30-minute program for kids ages 3 to 5 will be messy and full of hands-on exploration and experimentation to create works of art. Adults, you must stay with your children. Storytime registration begins January 13th. Session's going to run from January 21st through the Feb. 11th. It's available through the online calendar. Registration can also be done in person or by phone or on the website, or by email. Teens ages 11-18 who would like to help Youth Services Library prep for programs are invited to a teen volunteer session on Saturday, January 18th, from 10:00 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. Registration begins on January 13th and is available online, again, through the website, by phone, or by email. The library is having another puzzle competition on January 25th at 2:00 p.m. It was a big success, the last one, sold out. Teams will be made up of two to six members, with up to six teams competing in this family-friendly event, with only one person from your team needing to register. Registration begins, begins on January 11th, in all the ways that I previously mentioned. And here's a fun fact, more than 1,300 patrons enjoyed library programs in December. Explore the library's current programming on their website, or visit the library to join in on the excitement. Two things left to say, Happy New Year to everybody. Let's all make this a good, healthy, Happy New Year. And go Lions.
Yes.
All right, that's all I have, Mayor. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Vitale.
All right, well, I was going to start with Happy New Year, everyone, our first meeting of 2025. And I will also pick up on some comments on, related to priority. Not particularly coming from a resident complaint, but just my own observation. I am probably the most sympathetic to the idea of the cans not being put on the easements because a lot of the easements are uneven, a lot of the easements have issues with tree roots and things like that, and they frankly pitch towards the street. You have a fairly heavy, top-heavy dumpster can, you've got 20-degree weather out there, the thing falls over, it breaks, ultimately ends up in the street anyways. I can see some occasions where putting that can down next to the curb, there's an argument to be made. But the problem is, I watched them in operation, and they gave no regard. There was no concern given for where they put these cans down. They pretty much stuck one in front of my car. Now that's ridiculous. And we have such a supposedly data-driven company that wants to use cameras and, you know, maybe AI or something like that. I hope these guys will be the ones that program the terminators, because then we'll have a shot as a human race. They are doing a terrible job. They've got to do better. They're not supposed to collect both sides of the streets at once. And I do understand, there's streets like I'm on that only have nine homes and they're dead ends. So I kind of understand why they would do it the way they do. But there's other streets I was on, I was on Larchmont. That street runs for a solid quarter mile. There's plenty of turnaround and everything like that. There's no reason they should be collecting like that unless they're trying to save a nickel and keep these trucks lower-staffed, and they don't want to pay a route supervisor to go around and look. But this isn't what they were supposed to do. So, yes, we need, we need further follow-up on that. I was going to raise the issue of the cats. Just, you know, one follow-up to that was, I wasn't saying that we could arbitrarily make a decision that someone's now going to, excuse me, pay a fine or be something like that. But what I was speaking to was the idea that they wouldn't receive the protection of that ordinance, they'd be given some kind of notification. And then that would then result in a ticket, which would then be the judge making that decision ultimately. So not our staff, but we need to have something where our Animal Welfare Committee is saying they don't receive the protection of this ordinance, they've been declared to be non-compliant. And so, you know, again, that should maybe be an agenda item or something like that. One more thing to talk about, that is the Safer Grant that was raised at the last council meeting. It's come to my attention that one of the big problems for the fire department is adequate time to onboard people. They're operating below their statutory numbers right now. And I don't think there's any time soon where they're really even going to be caught up. It's kind of like the police department, too. All of these physical labor jobs, even DPW, have trouble hiring now. Even good career jobs with pensions, which is crazy. But I think we need to look at that Safer Grant, and we have to discuss it, I suppose, as a council. But I think we need to discuss staffing, the impact on overtime, potentially making it better, and, you know, how, how we can improve our onboarding and get these guys up and running that much quicker. If the money's out there, I think we should take advantage of it. So.
Let administration go back and do some work, see timing, et cetera, and then get that information back to council.
Yeah, I don't want it to be something where we didn't have time to get to it or something, it didn't get done, since I'm bringing it up here at the meeting.
Yep.
Okay, that's all I've got for the evening.
Thank you. Ms. Burgess?
I guess it's the day for priority, isn't it? Yeah, one of the things, this has happened a couple times now, and I live on Jefferson. I did have a problem where they were putting the trash containers in the middle of my driveway, couldn't get in. But the problem that we're seeing now is that we put out a recycle bin, the bin itself, and put cardboard in it, cut my, you know, husband cut it up, put it in the bin, and they emptied the bin in the trash. And that's the second time they've done that. So we've got to really find out what their, what their ruling is there, or why, why they would do that. So just wanted to bring that up. Happy New Year to everybody. I had a fantastic New Year, and I'm hoping 2025 is going to be the best year yet. So wishing everybody Happy New Year. I just wanted to bring up Aqua Freeze. If it's not cold enough, we're going to have Aqua Freeze here coming up. It's on January 25th and 26th. It's free for everybody. On Saturday, it's from 12 to 8:00, and Sunday, the 26th, it's from 12 to 6:00. They're having live music, ice carving show, hot chocolate. Can you read my own writing? Oh, the fire pits will be going, they're having putt-putt golf in the ice, horse-drawn carriage rides, food truck, and of course, a beer tent. So come out and have a fun time in Aqua Freeze. And that's all I have to say.
And just to piggyback, Councilwoman, with the lights over, the tunnel lights there will be on the weekends, we usually, it goes usually through Aqua Freeze. Last year, Aqua Freeze was in the middle of January, so it was a little closer to the Christmas, the Christmas and New Years. So this year, it being more at the end of the month, it will, we'll have the lights on during the weekends, and then off Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, then once Aqua Freeze is done, it'll, they'll all come down.
And also, there is no entertainment or food trucks
No.
on the weekends.
Correct.
It was up until Christmas or the...
Just before. Thank you. Mr. Rubello?
Yeah, first of all, I'd like to say to Angela Vitale out there, thanks for sticking through our meetings. Good to see you. And I'm going to give you the, we give those, oops, we give this to, all right, I give this to the folks that have done great things and good things in the community, and I know you've always got a smile on your face. So you get a Muskrat Award. Your dad can explain it to you. Okay, we'll get a picture with it after.
You'll get to take it home.
No.
Wouldn't want to take it home.
I'm just glad you didn't ruin it. I thought he was going.
It's missed a washing machine a few times. Yep. And just to piggyback a little bit on the, on the Roseberry cats, I had a nice conversation with the chief, Jeff Randazzo, and he seems to be trying to get this stuff under control. We just have to, we just have to keep an eye on this. And for anyone listening, we don't mean your pets, your cats in the house, your dogs, and, you know, you know, I have two beagles, but it's got nothing to do with your, your home pets, okay? So Chief Allen, the e-commerce program, is it still in effect for people to, if they're buying stuff off of the internet to meet at the police station? Are they still doing that?
Yes.
Do you get a crowd of people?
They come by occasion.
They come by occasion? Okay. So that program is still in effect, and that's for the new location on Jefferson South, down by Marty Road, St. Lucie's. I have anybody listening. Temporary location. Temporary location, yes. Temporary location. And I had a question, can people put a pickleball court in their yard? Is that against an ordinance?
Lot coverage. There's no lot coverage.
Yeah.
There would be setback requirements with that, but people have basketball courts in their yards, so I don't see why they couldn't.
Tennis courts.
People could put a pickleball in their, in their yard.
They could.
As long as they, you know, adhere to the noise ordinance, correct?
Noise ordinance and setback requirements. So there, there would be land use restrictions, you know, area restrictions on the properties.
I wanted to announce a, sort of call it a Beechwood Grade School reunion on January 16th, okay? It's at Beechwood Manor. So anybody who's ever attended for even one class to, you know, six classes or kindergarten class, is invited, anyone who might be listening, we're going to open up our old grade school. And we've got a ton of response so far from people that still live in the area, and there's a lot of them, that attended Beechwood. And if anybody's listening to this that attended, tell your friends that maybe grew up on your block too. So we got our whole block going on Tremblay. So I thought that was a cute little thing, and maybe some other schools can do that along the way. And the last thing, man, I don't know, are the pictures there? Okay. I want to tell you, there's, maybe I'll do it next minute, but there's a lot of new businesses that have come into St. Clair Shores. Now, I hear stuff, I hear people talking, I hear stuff on Facebook pages and things like that. I may count at close to 20 people that have come in within the last six months, all on the north that, between 14-mile and maybe about 12 and a half mile. So it's an awful lot of people, and some of them are just in these small buildings. And I think personally, we're doing great. I hear a lot of people want... And I think personally, we're doing great. I hear a lot of people want more stuff down on the north end of St. Clair Shores. I mean, we give them Kite Monroe, we give them Veterans Memorial Park and everything that we do inside Veterans Memorial Park. So the next time, folks, you're driving around, take a good look and see some of the new businesses that have popped up. I wish, I wish I, I took some pictures of some of them, but that's how it goes. So it's a good area to shop too. So that is all I have. If you want to volunteer for a snow brigade to help some of the folks that can't shovel their own snow for whatever reason, please contact me, the St. Clair Shores Snow Brigade. And I know Brian Owens, you've helped a few times too. So there's your hat I never gave you. All right?
Good throw, Dave.
That's a bad throw. You don't have to get it.
Is that it, Mr. Rabello? Ms. Rusi?
It's a good thing you didn't send another row back, Brian. Okay, first off, Happy New Year. I guess to piggyback on some of the topics raised about the potential study session topic for the cat related animal welfare ordinance, I think any ordinance ordinance recommendations should start with the animal welfare committee. That's what they're there for, to make those type of recommendations. And actually, several members who have extensive tenure experience, I think would be invaluable resources to start any of our discussion because I know a little bit about it, but they know a lot more and I would definitely give a lot of weight to their expertise. So maybe they can, before we have the study session, we just start all talking, get something written from them, I think, in terms of policy and ordinance changes. I think that would be super helpful. One thing, and I don't think this is technically necessarily handbook related for the committees, but just something, you know, on December 20th, we get email from the clerk's office with a bunch of minutes on it, and it's because, you know, as a clerk's office stayed in the email, they had to request from the committees, all missing minutes be submitted. So that resulted in us, because the clerk's office sends them to us just as they, immediately as they get them on that Friday noonish email. Because some committees had approved the minutes, but not taken the additional step of submitting them to the clerk's office, we received a bunch of minutes from even January and February 2024 on December 20th, 2024, 10 to 11 months later. You know, I was reading through these minutes about events planned, you know, events, the planning and, you know, conception of some of these events have long happened. And it's like, these are so useless to us, getting these at this point. We're just receiving and filing them, but it would be nice if we could get them on, you know, the clerk's office could get them on a more timely basis to submit to us. Especially on, a lot of these committees have multiple staff members, some of them taking the minutes, if not acting as a staff liaison. And I don't think we should have to wait 10 to 11 months to receive minutes from some of these committees. Especially when it's not just a resident based committee, it's a committee that has staff members on these committees. Maybe, you know, I don't think that's a handbook thing. I think that just needs maybe to come from the manager's office to restate the importance of timely meeting minute submission for a receipt and file from the committees. After they're approved, they should be coming to the clerk's office on a more timely basis. So they don't have to hunt them down in December of why didn't we get the minutes from January 2024? And it's December 2024, which at that point, you're reading these things, it's like, oh, music on the leg 2024. I wonder how that turned out. Oh, well, it's been over and done with for months at this point. So I, I think it would be helpful for us to receive those in a more timely basis from the committees. And secondly, I've sent a few emails about this. Then you go through these minutes. And occasionally, and these again, sometimes are minutes even taken by staff members, where the minutes, and sometimes they're not, but sometimes they are, where the minutes are not reflecting who made a motion, who seconded the motion and the results of that motion fully. Including, you'll get one, one person voted no. Well, who was that? Opinions, that Denise State who vote, who voted against it? That's also for motion for reconsideration purposes. So we know who on that committee, that committee knows for record keeping purposes, who is able to make a motion for reconsideration on a topic. So I think we really need to, I won't say put this in the handbook, I assume it's already in the handbook. But to reemphasize these, you know, the people doing the minutes, the importance of, at the very least, you don't have to write a book, but at the very least, making sure that the minutes properly reflect when motions are made, who made the motion, who seconded, and if we do have people voting against a motion made or abstaining, or whoever identifying those people by name, because that's important for record keeping purposes, both under state law and also for just basic robber's rules purposes of who can make a motion for reconsideration that's mean if that happens to come up. So again, I, that's not something to add. I assume that's already in the handbook and that was going back to two years ago, like John had mentioned, where I had said maybe a one pager of just, hey, some reminders for some of the committees about these things. I think that would have been a good point to put in, like I brought up two years ago. And again, that's apart from the handbook that is multiple pages. I'm just looking for little one or two page bullet point thing of, hey committees, here's something, you know, these type of, I'll call them reminders, because there is some, I think, especially given there's committee turnover, there's staff liaison turnover, people don't necessarily know these things going in. And I also think sometimes in terms of where they can meet, how do you cancel a meeting or move a meeting location or move a meeting to another day where it's a process, who, you know, taking the meeting, if the meeting is moved to a different date, making sure it's taken off of the calendar on the city websites that states, you know, where the meet, you know, what meetings are happening on what days, if it means canceled or moved. Okay, who is charged with the responsibility, making sure that gets removed. So the residents out there who might be considering attending one of these meetings know, so the committee, committee members know what's the process, just stuff like that. Just a simple one pager with the bullet points. Here's some, you know, here's a handout for you guys to look at and just remind yourselves of some of the bare bones, basic, very important things for committee operation. I think that would be helpful for the committees, which again, we have staff members on there, but these are also all volunteers who, you know what, this isn't their full time job. And maybe some, you know, getting some guidance apart from, remember the handbook you got 15 years ago when you were sworn in? I don't know. I think it would be helpful for operational purposes for the members who again are just resident volunteers, who we appreciate their service to have that type of guidance for leadership purposes, administrative purposes. So thank you.
Thank you. Item 12, City Manager's Report. Do you hear anything, Mr. Lent?
No report.
Item 13 is Audience Participation. Five minute time limit, views, opinions expressed under Audience Participation are those of the individual citizen only and do not necessarily represent the views, opinions, the mayor, city council administration of the city of St. Clair Shores. Do we have anyone who would like to speak? Yes, sir. Come on up. You can go first, then you'll, someone will show you where to sign in after. Just the name and the city you reside in, then anyone else can follow online and keep the same procedure.
Hi, my name's Dalton Westervelt.
Okay, if you just, right into the mic and then we, so we can hear you. Thank you.
Gotcha. Hi, my name's Dalton Westervelt. I reside in Maxine in St. Clair Shores.
All right.
I'd like to start off by saying thank you, Ms. Rusi. Your sister has been a teacher of mine at Southlake. Great time. Well, all right. Hello, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Dalton Westervelt and I currently reside on Maxine. And you know, as you know, the backyards on Maxine can get large. I would like to beautify my yard by adding a chicken coop for egg laying hens, and I'm aware that the city has them under section 6-9 as a farm animal, and they are prohibited. I'd like to have this section revised because I feel like it's outdated with the current watch on what we eat, ingest and put into our bodies. As a fellow resident and other residents of St. Clair Shores I have talked to, they also would like to see backyard chickens allowed into the city. I feel like there's a lot of support on getting this passed. Hopefully this falls into the right hands of a city council member that would be willing to bring some beautification into our backyards. Other surrounding cities allowing egg laying chickens are Clinton Township with a permit of four hens. East Point with a permit up to three. Roseville with a permit up to four. And Harrison Township is under state law until nuisance by neighbors. I'm aware the suggestion was brought up in 2020 and was talked about in council. Personally would like to know what stopped this revision and what we can do to get this approved. It seems like every other day, my dad comments to me that he wants chickens. Our property, our property and fellow members on Maxine are adequately sized to hold a coop without any disturbance by neighbors, including noise and any possible predators, because how spacious they can get. I can understand this because my mother's property is also on Maxine close to Marty. And there would be a harder chance to raise six chickens due to occasional clucking caused by their egg song when laying an egg. Her property from start of the curb to the back of the property line can be engulfed in our larger backyards. Some of our fellow members have double lots, making a lot of space useless and needing to find a use for our land. A basic swing set and fire pit won't fill a half acre to a full acre backyard. Another reason I feel like this section is outdated and should be up for a revision is the current adoption of honeybee hives in the community garden behind the civic center. The city does not have anything in writing about honeybees, yet the USDA considers honeybees to be livestock. In the definition on farm animal in section 6-2, farm, farm animal includes any livestock, horse, swine, cattle, sheep, goat, llama, duck, chicken, turkey or rabbit, except that one rabbit shall be permitted per residential premises. What has changed when this topic was brought up in 2020 in council and denied to 2022 when the community garden has adopted beehives? If it was to bring beautification to St. Clair Shores, then I'm on the same page with our larger backyards. Chickens are a great natural source to keep around because they're omnivores in the wild. They scratch of the soil, search for seeds and insects, and they eat animals like mice. They are also all around good for everything. They give enjoyment as a pet and give you an excellent source of protein in the form of eggs. That is why I propose an adoption of a revision on section 6-9 to bring egg laying hens into St. Clair Shores only by obtaining a permit according to property lot size on a two tier permit system and getting an affidavit signed by neighbors. I've rewrote the city's, city ordinance, section, section 6-9. And hopefully this would change your opinion on having chickens into the city along with generating a little revenue for the city due to the permits. That is all.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have a, something to pass out?
Yes, if you.
Can you just bring that up to us? Be great. Thank you.
Is this, were you had emailed me?
Yeah, well, not, not this portion. I'll bring all that to you if you.
Oh, he got it.
All right, thank you. Have a good evening. Yes, ma'am. You have to sign in, sir? Just go back and sign in if you don't like.
Hi, my name is Molly Donaldson. I'm here to speak again about the cats on Rosebrier, Brier Court situation. And I wanted to keep you up to date and let you know that the neighborhood and the neighbors are appreciating and hearing that you guys are definitely working on this. We have had some things come about since the last meeting. One thing that I was made aware of by my next door neighbor who couldn't come tonight because she slept, slipped and fell and broke her hand this morning on the ice, but we now have members of the community that are coming by early in the morning and throwing food over the fence to feed the poor animals. So that's something to be aware of. As far as we are concerned, the only acceptable solution to that specific problem is zero cats. Zero. The vacuum effect, I ask you all to do a little research, like you talked about, a little bit of work. That's just not acceptable. Somebody will be feeding those cats. They're not, they shouldn't be treated that way. She's not going to be able to handle it. She's already shown us that she's, can't do that. The T and R Trap Neuter Release Program, or the people that have been working with her for four years, haven't done anything at all. So I don't know why we would continue down the path with those people. I'm sorry, it just isn't working. So that's another, I just want you to be made aware of. I'm also not sure if any of you did look at the FOIA request because Gina and I have, have that. So if you did look at that, you're aware that this problem has been going on since, I think, 2011, 14? That's a really long time. So I, I was shocked a little bit last time when I came here, how unaware that you all were to this problem. Because the second you put it on Facebook, everybody on Facebook is like, oh, Rosebrier, Rosebrier. I mean, it's a well-known little dirty secret over there. So I was like, whoa. I couldn't believe you guys were unaware. I would like to get down to knowing what are the policies? It seems pretty standard in communities to have pet policies. Like for example, where I used to live, no more than four, four of any kind, four cats, four dogs, four turtles, whatever. You only get four. And if you feed them, they're yours. So if you're feeding those cats, they're yours. That's your responsibility. It seems pretty logical, common sense. That's kind of what we're looking for here. So again, I want to reiterate that the vacuum, no. We're only accepting zero cats. I don't want those cats in my yard anymore. I love them. It's heartbreaking to see these cats freezing to death. And we're only up here doing this because we love the animals. And I, it's just really, it's, it's really that simple. Nothing has changed there in the last month. Those cats are still in my backyard. They're still out there freezing. There are not 14 cats. I would estimate there are between 40 and 65. So I don't know who gave you that 14 number. That's way off. So I'd like to also know who's responsible, who's going to pay for this, the trap neutering, releasing. Is she going to get more tickets that the judge is just going to wipe away again? Because that's in the FOIA. So we really want some accountability. We want to know what the standard is. And, and if you need to go after people, residents who aren't following you know, what's the law, then do it. That's pretty much it. They're just, I'm going to keep coming back. We're going to keep coming back until this problem is solved. And it's unfortunate that it's January and it's 10 degrees out. So we'll get to the bottom of this. Thank you again, though. And I do want you to know that we were approached by the media right after the last city council, and we both declined to do an interview or discuss it because we felt that the city is meeting us. So as long as we're got that kind of working relationship here, we'll keep on going the right path here. Appreciate your help. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
My name's Karine Franks, and I moved here about a year and a half ago from Gross Point Farms. And when I first moved here, the garbage situation was terrible. It's like, throw the lids everywhere. But after we went in and got a new garbage can for the recycling and we talked to the people at there about how things are working, I have no problems. They lit, they put, put the lid on, put it back. So right now, our service right now on share and my my daughter lives a block and a half away out the next block over. And my, my great granddaughter, she babysits on Tuesday and Wednesdays. And the good little one's waving at the garbage guys and they'll take the garbage can up next to her. So I think we got a good, my guys are good. I can't complain anymore. They used to be bad, they're good now and and I like, I like the community I live in, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? With that, we'll go back to Mayor's comments, I don't have any, so a motion to adjourn would be in order.
Close session.
Oh, yeah, I got, request meeting, close session is permitted on the second page, stated by State Statute MCLA 15.268, Section 8H.
So moved, support.
Moved by Mr. Frederick, supported by Mr. Karen. Roll call, vote, please.
Councilmember Frederick?
Aye.
Councilmember Karen?
Aye.
Councilmember Burgess?
Aye.
Councilmember Rabello?
Aye.
Councilmember Rusi?
Aye.
Councilmember Vitale?
Aye.
Aye. Good night.